Okay, um, welcome everyone who's here, everyone on Zoom. I'm going to call to order the April 2021 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we could start with a roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Contreras? It's my understanding he's joining us.
Fred, turn on your mic. John is online, but turn on your mic so he can hear you.
Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Broadhead?
Here.
Mr. Armstead?
Here.
Mr. Respinto?
Here.
Mr. Harwell?
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Okay, next item of business would be the recommendations of the nominating committee. I was appointed last month as chairman pro tem, but we need to elect a new slate of officers, a chairperson and a vice chairperson. And last month, I appointed Brady Wilson to lead our nominating committee. Does the nominating committee have any recommendations for chair and vice chair?
We do. We unanimously recommend Mr. Roberts as chair, and the vote was split on vice chair with the nod going to me. What's the recommendation for vice chair, is me?
Okay, so in terms of who the other nominees were?
Ms. Wilcutt was the other.
Okay, okay. So today, do we still have a nomination for Ms. Wilcutt? Is there from the floor? I think that the committee makes a recommendation, and if there are any other nominations from the floor, we could accept those now. Okay. Fred, just so I, the nominating committee had a recommendation or a nomination for Ms. Wilcutt, but I don't hear that from the floor, as right now, the only nomination I hear is for Brady.
Right, as I understand, Mr. Wilson, the nominating committee had recommended a slate of officers for yourself, Mr. Wilson, it was a split vote, um?
It was, it was a two to one. So the recommendation was for me with a vote for Ms. Wilcutt.
The committee's recommendation was yourself and Mr. Stewart, uh, and the construction. So, that is the recommendation of the Homewood Planning Commission. What needs to be done? Is there a nomination from the floor for a position of either chairman or vice chairman?
I would move to nominate Mr. Roberts for chairman.
Second.
I'm sorry, I'm, 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 you know, we have a recommendation for the, we, all right, that, that's.
I'm sorry, I think, let me rescind that and, and move to accept the nomination committee's recommendations.
All right, and do you have a second for that? But, in fact, what I'm trying to say is having, we have the recommendation of the.
Hey, Fred, Fred, can you turn on the mic?
All right, all right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations of the nominating committee. All right, so yes, let's go ahead and vote on that recommendation then. So will, all in favor of that recommendation, it's a recommendation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, now, having accepted that recommendation, are there any nominations from the floor for either chairman or vice chairman? So are there any nominations? At which point, if there were, we will vote individually on those nominees. Any other nominations for the positions of vice chairman or chairman? All right. Having had no other nominations, we'll again vote on the recommendations for the both positions at the same time, vice chairman and chairman, as recommended by the nominating committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, by acclamation, Mr. Roberts is the chairman and Mr. Wilson is the vice chairman for the remainder until the September meeting, as we've noted, at which time the planning commission will conduct its normal annual election of officers. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, hopefully we have no more votes until September. Okay, so next item, Fred circulated the March minutes. I looked at them and they looked good to me. Does anyone else have any comments on them before we have a motion to approve them? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the March 2021 minutes.
Second.
Okay, I didn't hear, was it Ms. Andrews?
Somewhere down there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, um, yes, um, so we had a motion, it wasn't from Brady, from Mr. Wilson.
It was a second.
Okay.
I'll move.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, I got it. Okay, um, so I'll call, I guess call for a vote then, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, those are approved. So communications from the chair and vice chair, considering we're elected about 12 seconds ago. I don't have any, but do you have any, Mr. Wilson?
I have none.
Okay, all right, so we have no old business from last month, so we'll move to new business for this month. The first case is RS.
Mr.
I think Mr. Contreras.
Yeah, his service is going in and out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did I say that I was present or?
Yeah, Mr. Contreras, I'm afraid we're not able to hear you.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know, I may have missed it, but I didn't hear my names, so I can say that I'm present.
Yes, yes, Mr. Contreras, I think we have you marked as present. Thank you. Okay, so the first case is RS 21-04-01 relating to. Relating to 260 Oxmoor Road. The applicant is Chesley Payne. If you would come forward and tell us about your case. And this, actually, the first two cases, RS 21-04-01 and RS 21-04-02, one is a, a, a new survey, a resurvey, one is a rezone. If you could present those at the same time, and then we will vote on those separately.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Chesley Payne with Matthew Stotzer Nichols. I'm representing the owners of the property located at 260 Oxmoor Road.
Mr. Payne, I'm sorry to interrupt you, could you state your address for the record as well?
Yes, the address is 260 Oxmoor Road.
Yeah, okay, your, your personal address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize. My personal address is 220 Pat's Way, Springville, Alabama, 35146.
Okay, thank you, now go ahead and proceed, sorry.
Certainly, okay. Before the planning commission, we have filed two applications. The first is for the rezoning of a portion of the property and a subdivision of that property. The current use of the property is essentially an empty former hotel that the owners are looking to number one demo and then replace with the two separate new developments on the two new parcels, if approved by this commission. The first intended use on lot 5A, as shown in the packet that was presented with the application, is a 91,400 plus or minus square foot Class A climate controlled storage facility. The idea behind it is probably something familiar to, if you've seen these facilities in other metro areas such as Nashville, Atlanta. In this case, the exterior, as you can see from the ring rings, is modeled after something akin to an office building or hotel on this. It will be far more aesthetically pleasing than what is currently on the property, and what we think will be a positive addition to the area itself. The building is going to have, is, sometimes when people think of these storage facilities, they get a negative connotation. In this case, however, this is not going to be a mini storage or something of that nature. There is going to be controlled access to the facility for the employees in those renting space. There are going to be limited hours of access to this facility. The exterior is going to be extensively well lighted, and that is so that everyone who comes and goes from this location can have a sense of security. And the owners intend to install cameras both on the exterior and interior of the building, in this case. The reasons why we're asking for the zoning change on that lot 5A is, first of all, the current zoning does not allow for the highest and best use of the property. The owners have looked at a variety of uses for this property, including maybe redoing the hotel idea here, but in the current economic climate, COVID, et cetera, travel, anything related with travel is not a smart economic bet at this point. There's also too much competition in the area, and it also comes down to that, according to the owners, their own research, Homewood has no true Class A climate controlled storage facility itself at this point. There are some Class B and C, as they refer to type structures, but there's nothing that puts the emphasis on number one, making the exterior as aesthetically pleasing as this will be, and the focus on creating a secure environment around the building as well. Obviously, the way they are treating this is if the subdivision and the rezoning is approved, it's more, it's sort of a two-phase approach. The first phase is going to be demoing the old building that it currently, as it currently exists, replacing it with a climate controlled storage building. And then, on the front, or as I call it, the front, on lot 5B, there is a plan at this point to put there some form of retail restaurant space there. The idea is to attract something unique to the Birmingham area. They have been in talks with several potential tenants, both from a facility lease and or ground lease aspect, but the idea behind this, it really requires, their, the redevelopment idea really requires both of these parcels to have, to be subdivided and have the proper zoning to make this work from an economic standpoint. I know the owners have themselves gone out and tried to obtain, you know, public feedback towards what would work well in this case. And this seems to fit with what they have been told, that people in the area, they're looking for something that will change the environment in this area. In other words, provide something that both looks better and provides something that otherwise has not been in the immediate vicinity of this. As far as this goes, they plan on moving pretty fast if they are able to get approval on this project. What we're probably looking at is, after approval, demo will probably start within one or two months. Probably looking at the demo work to take approximately five to six months. I try, I ask people to try not to hold me to construction timelines too closely if they can, but that is the general idea, with construction to begin two to three months after the completion of the demo work. At this point, that I think what everybody's in agreement on, and especially the owners, is that the current structure is not doing anyone any good in its current placement and current condition. And the two-phase process that we're trying to pursue there will ensure that property values will be greatly enhanced, both for themselves and surrounding property owners, and the aesthetics of it will cause the area to look very different after this. It should also, what their hope is, at the end of the day, that this plants a seed in this area that can maybe, you know, start a trend in the area of other owners looking at their properties and realizing that there may be a way, you know, to improve on what is currently there at this point.
Okay, thank you. I think the board members in a few minutes will have some, or commission members, rather, will have some questions, but for now, we're going to open up the public portion of this case. We have a group of people here, and we have a pretty good crowd on Zoom. Let's start with the people here, anyone who wants to speak to the case here will go first. After that, we will go to Zoom. If you could, if you're on Zoom, I don't know if you have the ability to raise your hand, or, or just maybe speak up once we get to that point, and Brian will identify you, and we'll, we'll call on you as we get started. But for now, let's start with the people who are present. If you come, once you come up to the, to the podium, give your name, address, and if we could try to keep, limit comment to about three minutes, that would be, that would be very helpful, so.
My name is Michael Eady. I live at 133 Gillan Drive. I'm a Homewood, West Homewood resident. I'm actually a, now own two different businesses in Homewood over the last six months. So I'm coming to you as both a resident and a business owner in Homewood, and specifically a business owner in West Homewood, one of which has 15 different families from West Homewood that have invested in that business. And I'm here to speak on behalf of all 15 of those business owners. I've also spoken to the business owners of Seeds, Nexus Fitness, and Ash West Homewood as well, and they've all given me permission to speak on their behalf. We see absolutely no negative to a redevelopment of this property into a climate controlled storage. In fact, at the end of the day, it's very clear to us, there are simply two options on the table. We have an abandoned hotel that has been there for almost a decade. As a resident, we're sick and tired of looking at it. Or we have a redeveloped climate controlled storage unit that may not be the perfect option in many people's eyes, but it is certainly progress and it is moving West Homewood forward in our redevelopment efforts. And at the end of the day, there's also the opportunity for additional retail development and other things to come into our neighborhood. And so for me, it is a simple, easy answer, and I understand that there are rules and things and regulations in place, but at the end of the day, I would ask as a resident and a business owner to simply apply common sense and look at this in a very simple way. Block out the fear and the negative things and the negative voices that are out there and the things that have happened in the past. It's time to move forward, and the opportunity is there, and it is a climate controlled storage or it is an abandoned hotel. And so I would ask as a resident and speaking on behalf of some of the other business owners in West Homewood, that we move forward with this, push it to city council, and allow those folks to hopefully apply common sense as well, so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Norris, property owner at 201 Vulcan Road. We're actually a neighbor property to this hotel. We moved into that building, bought it about two years ago, and have renovated it extensively on the outside and inside. Knew that we were, you know, part of some change there, and have looked at that building every day that we come in and out. We've talked with the Patel's quite a bit, and they've stayed in touch with us. I, I believe that they're sincere and their desire to want to add to the community. I'm not a community planner, I, I can't tell you the future that it is going to be the best thing for the area, but I do know that we have hundreds of thousands of vacant square feet in a very close area to us. We have the federal building, we have the old Sears there, we have this hotel. The idea of having money invested into the property appeals to me, and again, I think they're sincere, and trying to find something that works both as a business owner as well as helping the community. We're in favor of it, if they're held to what they're proposing, that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Good evening, commissioners. Matt Rich, 239 Fairlane Drive, Homewood, Alabama. So West Homewood resident as well, one of those that goes out of Oxmoor and sees this eyesore every day. I come to you tonight as a person that was quite hesitant of what the Patel's were, were selling. The recent week, we had a meeting of West Homewood residents at Nexus Fitness. I went there, frankly, as a, as a resident that wanted to say, I don't think this will be a good thing for us, I heard storage facility, and immediately I had a visceral reaction of just, that's just going to be awful. You made the wrong decision. Having spoken with the Patel's and took some time to talk with them, I had to, as the old saying goes, would eat crow. After speaking with them, it is going to be a facility that we can be proud of when we see it. Certainly, it's going to be better than what we see now. Quite frankly, I would go out there myself with a sledgehammer and help them tear it down, if it would help. But I can see their vision. After speaking with them, I do think they have best intent for our neighborhood. Certainly, it has been a long time coming. That thing's been there for quite some time. So it would be nice to see something positive move into that space, and then positive moving forward. So even though I was extremely hesitant, didn't believe I would be up here speaking for it, probably two weeks ago, after speaking with them and, and asking many questions and, and seeing really where their, where their hearts for the neighborhood are, I come to you tonight as a person that's positive, and I think it would be a positive addition to the neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, and my name is Eric Gibson. I live at 301 Huntington Park Road. I also would be in favor of this. My daughter goes to Hall Kent, and I come down after dropping her off, and I stare at that building every morning, turning to get on I-65. I don't see anything good from it being there in its current state. I think there is a better than decent chance that it could spark some much needed growth and development in that area, and I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Lauren Adair, 2, Lauren Adair, 252 Allen Avenue. I come to y'all just to let you know that this is a positive, a big positive for our community. They don't have to invest all of this money that they're willing to invest, and I too met with them, and you can just see how positive they want to be. We definitely don't want another hotel in the neighborhood. We can admit they are all eyesore's and that we want to rid them of that whole area. So I think them going this way is a very big positive for us in the community as a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else present want to speak to this case before we go to the, to Zoom? Okay, it appears we're finished with the crowd that's here. Do we have anyone on Zoom who's ready to speak to this case?
If you are online and you would like to speak, you can unmute. If a couple of you mute, unmute at the same time, just be respectful of each other, but you can unmute at this time and go ahead and speak.
Hello, I'm Harold Shader with Shader Realty. I'm opposed to the development and the change of zoning. I think we've got plenty of storage units in the area, there's better suits, locations for a storage unit. I understand everybody wants to get rid of the eyesore, but I think we've been waiting for this redevelopment for 11 years now, and I don't think we need to change the zoning. The Gerd zoning was intent is, is as it outlined to improve, I don't think this is an improvement. Of course, it improves it based on, it's a new, new facility, but this was, storage facility could be put in any other location, not, not at the gateway of, of Homewood. We're talking about changing the zoning, a spot zoning, I don't think that's right. If you're going to rezone the area, rezone all the area to, to be, be two or be four. So I think that it's a great location for a lot of uses. I don't think a storage unit is the proper use for our community. I know we want a beautiful thing, but I think a three-story structure of this nature right here at the gateway of our community is the wrong decision. We need to think about other uses. A brand-new hotel would be great with, with restaurants, or three different restaurants. But to put a storage unit on this prime piece of property is the wrong way to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Harold Shader, 197 Vulcan Road, and that's 35209. My home address is 1909 Indian Lake Drive, Birmingham, Alabama, 35244.
Thank you. Anyone else? As Brian said a moment ago, if you, if you want to speak, just unmute your microphone and, and start. Okay, with that, we will close the public portion of this, this case. Mr. Payne, if you would come back up and we have some questions for you. I'll start just by asking you to explain a little bit what you're mechanically trying to do here, both, in both cases, both with regard to the resurvey and, and the rezoning request.
With mechanically, and let's make sure I understand the question properly, it's, the attempt is to create, subdivide the property into two separate lots. Of course, as stated, lot 5A will be the storage facility building, that will be the bulk of the property there, and lot 5A will be the retail slash restaurant development area on that. I think there is a proposed subdivision plat that was put in with the application on that for your review on that. But the idea, and I guess the way this will probably work is, we would ask that the subdivision application be considered first, obviously, and if approved, then we would ask that the rezoning of the storage facility lot then be approved. It's the way we would ask that to flow. As far as, as we can see, we have the same type of zoning directly across Vulcan Road from, from the current, from this property at this point. And what we're trying to do is create a property that is both revenue generating and at the same time, I think it's one of the public comments stated, presents a better face than what currently sits there. If I'm able to provide this to you, what I'd like to do is provide you with. More than anything, I think it just shows what their inspiration is for the retail and restaurant development. Obviously, these are ideas they have taken from other localities, other places. In other words, I'm not a marketing person, but they want to make a pretty big splash, especially with the retail restaurant. They want it to be someplace that people from Homewood and outside Homewood would want to come to. Not only for their benefit, but also for the benefit of the city. The owners have expressed to me several times that something like this is needed in the area, not only, obviously, to correct the issues with their own property, but also as to maybe provide a more conducive environment to other property owners that will, you know, sort of lead them to the same belief that they have reached, which is, there's real potential here, and we need to unlock that potential and allow this property to be developed in a way that will lead to other sort of following suit afterwards.
I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind, sorry. So I'm going to run through them, if you don't mind. The, I'm a little confused, I'm not sure I have quite, may have misunderstood other points that have been made. Will the current owners retain ownership of both the retail and the storage facility?
That is correct.
Okay, so they will build and they will then lease?
They will, that is correct.
Or will they operate?
They will build and operate the storage facility. They will build and more than likely lease out the operations of the retail restaurant facility to their tenants.
But they'll retain ownership of that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, just one second, sorry.
Sorry, my name's Ash Patel, and what you guys are looking at is a revised site plan for, which, it's not on the initial packet that everybody got, so it's, the retail portion is after we spoke to a lot of the residents in the neighborhood, and we got feedback that people want to see a sports bar, because you know, it wants excitement. I mean, back in the day, people were like jitterbugs, and we're like, well, can't bring back jitterbugs, but, you know, at least we have something that will spark interest. And our, our vision is, and our goal is to bring in a sports bar that's not currently in the Birmingham metro area. We want, because there's a lot of sports bars out there with, I mean, it's, it's a, nothing against the ones that are in the, in the Birmingham area, but we want something that people will drive from other cities that will come here and that they can, they can, if you get like a Buffalo Wild Wings, there's Buffalo Wild Wings everywhere. Nothing against it, but, you know, that's our goal, and we're actually in current talks with Jonathan's Grill and Miller's Ale House. Obviously, it's based on the rezoning, but. Obviously, it's based on the rezoning, but those are the, that's the vision that we have. You know, some people say, well, that's a little, that's a little extreme. That's a little high vision. Well, it's like, you know, we have a great piece of land, and we want to do something and leave a legacy on this property to do something special. And we've heard the voices in the neighborhood. I did want to make one point, something that somebody said on the Zoom call was about wanting, they wanted to see a hotel there. Post-COVID world, that entire market has changed. It's just not a feasible type of business that makes sense. I think people want to see change. Yeah, you want to see a high-end hotel there, but you got all your high-end hotels on that next exit, you know? And so, and we understand that in order for the, us to be able to put the stores there, we can use, because it's very low impact on traffic, you don't need a lot of parking, and we can use the entire front portion of the GERD that we're wanting to keep to do retail, sports bar in that corner piece, something that the neighborhood can actually interact with the property. Because if it's a hotel, you know, it's very unlikely that most of the people wherever want to stay there.
So you do anticipate multiple bays? It's not just going to be one big restaurant?
No, no. It's going to be a retail, it's going to be a sports bar and then a retail strip. Obviously, it's built to suit based on what kind of tenant that we get. Example purposes, like a Panera Bread, if they want to end cap, then they pretty much dictate how they want to be and where they want to be located, and then you have to build around them, because that's just the way it goes, but.
Before I pass the baton to somebody else, I'm going to switch to the storage then. You mentioned Class A, B, and C. How are those defined differently? Differentiate them?
Absolutely. And I did, I think one of your questions was something about, we just want to own the asset.
This is A? Is what we're saying? Is this Class A?
It's on the back end.
Right. Okay, that's not obvious. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
These are Class A, other Class A facilities throughout the state. You've got these in Georgia, Tennessee.
So your intent is to have one door that you walk in? It's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, the loading dock is in the rear of Vulcan Road. You won't even be able to see the loading dock. You won't see 18-wheelers unloading and all that. Leasing office is back there as well.
Yep, okay. Which was part of the questions and discussion we had in the work meeting was the rendering and the final product being similar.
Yes.
Your, is there any outdoor storage that you intend? Trucks, equipment?
Fully climate controlled.
Nothing outside, so.
Fully climate controlled.
Good, good to know. And then Fred, this might be a question for you. When we talk about intending to have cameras, is that the same as proffering and we're saying we absolutely will have cameras for securities that would be in place that we'd be interested in hearing about?
Yeah.
And I guess my question is, would you proffer that you will have security cameras in place?
We, we're having a management company run it, and it's required, and it's obviously something we want to protect our asset. The cameras inside and out, the only thing that the cameras inside the building cannot do is have visual of anybody's particular units. You can't, you just can't have any inside view of it, but all hallways. And another security feature that I want to mention about the storage facility is, let's say you have a unit on the third floor, and you want to go to the second floor because one of your friends has a unit. You can't get into that. You can't get off the elevator into the second floor. You have to have a key. Your code will only let you get to the floor that you're on. Same thing with the stairwell. If you decide you were on the third floor and you want to go down the stairwell, it'll take you to the bottom. You can't get to the second floor. You can't even go to the first floor, because there's another door on the first floor that you have to put your key code in to be able to access.
That's great. I'm finished. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask, how will we know that this property is going to look like this? I mean, I think this is a nice rendering.
Absolutely.
And I had some heartburn over, you know, considering rezoning away from GERD. I know, you know, City Council's many terms ago put a lot of work into putting GERD into place. How do I know this property is going to look like this?
Yep. Storage will look like depicted. Retail is conceptual. It will change based on what type of tenant that we get. But storage will look like that.
Well, you will have to go, the signs, you have, the signs will have to go to council for assigned variants, in a number of signs. But the actual facility, you know, I want to know it's going to look like this.
Yep. If anything, we might just add stone to the side, about 12 feet high on the side, just to give it some, give it some accent. That we're going to, we're going to go take some options and look at that, but as majority, yes, that'll look like that, but we'll be adding some stone or something similar to that to the side to give it some flavor. And if you look at the packet, I think that he brought up on the, in the last three pages, those are examples of other facilities in different areas that have type of stone that we were looking to, or we'd be concerned with. And again, majority, there's an example over here, and I'll show it to you guys. You know, this is in Atlanta, a marketplace at Terra Mill. If you see the facility that's getting built there, you can't even tell it's a storage facility. It looks like an apartment complex. And that's, that's the main goal here, is to not make it look like one. And, because we know people, when they see it, they're just thinking like, oh, storage. But, hey, we want people to say, wow, this looks great. What is that? And then, oh, self-storage. So, but again, that's, that's the goal.
My understanding is we're recommending body for this request. Is there anything, I think they've done a great job of explaining what they're intended to do, what they're proposing to do. Is there a way that we could add something to our recommendation that would incorporate that they've, that we're, if we decide to vote to recommend doing this, we're only doing so if they build it based off these designs and this aesthetic? Is there a way to do that?
Recommendation could include reference to the fact that it would be built substantially in accord with the renderance that was submitted as part of the case packet.
Right, whoever makes the initial motion would add that, add that on.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to address the comment that Mr. Shea made. Mr. Shea, I said his name right. This property is surrounded by C3, and so it is not, it's on the edge of the GERD, and so this is not a spot zoning situation. I did just want to clarify that.
Yeah, it's not.
It is surrounded by C3, and C5 for that matter, it's adjacent to C5, so I do want to mention that.
Ken, Fred, I think we discussed this earlier, but, you know, for the people who are worried about building a hotel, if you rezone to C5, a hotel is a permitted use in either GERD or C5, correct?
Yeah.
And the only purpose for rezoning to C5 would be to allow this type of facility that you've described, the Class A storage facility.
In our interpretation of the zoning ordinance anyway, it states if we, the subdivision of the property is allowed to proceed, there's not going to be enough space for parking for a hotel or item lot at that point. So we will have inevitably, you know, set our course towards building what's been proposed here.
One last question, Fred. Am I correct that the, if subdivided, both, both new subdivisions or the new GERD and the new C5 lots would both meet the requirements for those types of, for that type of zoning?
Yeah, yeah. The size lots would be sufficient to come, yeah. Yeah, based on, you know, I don't know about the retail, but yeah.
Okay.
One thing that did not get brought up, but we did want to mention, sorry, was that we will also be maintaining all the buffers as well. Just wanted to throw that out there. All the buffer strips and everything, we'll be maintaining that.
Do we have any more questions from the commission? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve, we'll, let me back up. We're going to, as I mentioned earlier, we'll vote on these individually, and I think you requested this as well. The first vote would be, if there's a motion, would be on the resurvey and splitting this into two different lots. So I would entertain a motion to approve case RS-21-04-01, the resurvey portion.
Motion to approve RS-21-04-01.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Wilson moved, and Ms. Andrus seconded.
All right. Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt? Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So your resurvey passes. And I would also entertain a case, sorry, a motion to approve RZ-21-04-02 with further recommendation that any, any facility, built storage facility, would be in substantial compliance with the drawings that have been provided in the packet that you provided us.
I'll make a motion to approve RZ-21-04-02, as stated by Mr. Roberts, and including the requirement by contract for your security cameras.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Respinto.
Respinto, all right, okay. Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt? Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So that will be a favorable case 9-0 recommendation to the City Council with the situation we mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So our next, our next two cases are also related. They are case number RS-21-04-03, a request for resurvey for 213, I'm sorry, 316 and 320 Starett Avenue, and also case RZ-21-04-04, which is a rezone request for those same two addresses on Starett Avenue. The applicant is Ronald Van Erv. Mr. Van Erv, are you here to present? And while you're walking up, would you get up to state your name and your, your address, please?
Yeah, good evening. Ronald Van Erv, 316 Starett Avenue, Homewood.
Okay. All right, Mr. Van Erv, what are you asking us to do? What is your, what is your case?
Just very simple. All we're doing is, my neighbor, you know, Charles Williams, we're swapping two little pieces of property. One from the, between our two driveways, he's going to acquire basically about a foot of property from me. Then on the backside strip, then I'm going to do the same, acquire about a foot of property from him that puts a dividing wall onto my property. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Van Erv. We'll have, we might have some questions for you in a moment, the commission, but for now, we're going to open this up to the public to speak on this case.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. So we'll do this the same way we did before. First, anyone present who wants to speak on this case can come up. Hope you limit your comments to three minutes. Give your name, your address, as the, as people did before, and then we'll go to Zoom. So let's start first with people who are present.
My name is Jim Dodds. I'm at 429 Berry Avenue. My wife and I, Julia, have lived at this address for 38 years this month. When we moved here to that house in 1983, 316 Starett was not there. It was a large tract of land owned by a family in Homewood that had a large house and a smaller house on Starett, and the rest was woods. In 1985, there was a hearing to rezone that property to construct 30 homes on five acres of land. And that is when they included 316 Starett as well as 312 Starett in that property. And we were told at that time, those two houses would not impact Berry Avenue. The original owner, Ed Dos, he built a pool after obtaining additional land where there was a vacant right-of-way with the city. He built it with a high fence, and he told us his pool would not impact Berry Avenue. Now, when I read this notice here of this hearing, it really doesn't say much. It's very vague. But the thing that really sticks out to me is a memo from Jerry O'Perious, surveyor, who did a resurvey, and the purpose was to make an existing fence, the revised property line, allowing use of a pool deck up to said fence and to create an exclusive ingress, egress easement for the use of Lot 2, allowing access to Berry Avenue and existing public street. That's why I submitted an email to Mr. Goodwin yesterday with opposition to the reasons for this, along with signatures from 28 adults that live on our street. There were only two that I did not get because I could not reach them. So that's 93% of the adults living on our street. I feel like there's a safety issue. We have over 20 children on this street. And allowing access to Berry Avenue is going to increase the chance of more vehicular traffic on this dead-end street and increase the danger to our children. Also, if there's access to Berry Avenue from that pool deck, there's a safety issue there of the potential of a child drowning. There's also a space issue. Berry Avenue is not as wide as most residential streets in Homewood. Also, that circle is not wide enough for a fire truck to even come down and turn around. In fact, when they do come, they know they have to back down into Berry Avenue to be able to get out. So that is another issue with this, this street. And finally, the quality of life issue. If you had, if 316 Starett Avenue has access to Berry Avenue and it was to dispose of garbage trash, that is going to be an issue for us, because Berry Avenue is not an alley. It's our front space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present here tonight?
Good evening. Robin Beasley, 401 Berry Avenue. I will echo my neighbor's comments. We don't completely understand what the intent is behind the request for the resurvey and the rezoning, but there are 18 homes and 18 families on Berry Avenue who are diametrically opposed to a resurvey or a rezoning that results in permanent ingress and egress off that cul-de-sac at the end of Berry Avenue. Like, like Jim said, Berry Avenue is not an alley. It shouldn't be allowed to be treated as such. It's not a parking lot. It's where the kids on Berry Avenue shoot basketball and ride their bikes. So anything that would result more traffic or permanent ingress and egress off that cul-de-sac to 316 or 320 Starett is something we absolutely oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Clyde Walker. I live at 433 Berry Avenue. My property is adjacent to the property we're talking about. It's the closest one on the cul-de-sac. I agree with everything that Jim said. He laid it out pretty well. I think that everybody on that street is in agreeance, everybody on Berry Avenue. Just, just understanding that whatever decision you guys make is going to affect, and we will live with whatever decision you make on Berry Avenue. But every, every resident, every homeowner is opposing it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in, present in the audience want to speak to this case? Okay, there being none, let's go to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom, if you want to speak to this case? I see a couple of hands raised. Let's, let's go to the two people with the hands raised, and then we'll go. Let's, let's go to the two people with the hands raised, and then we'll go to the unmuting method, but I can't see the names, Brian, if you don't mind, just picking one and we'll go.
So Justin, you put your hand up first, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute and talk.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I am Justin Grammer. I am the resident at 425 Berry Avenue, currently constructing a home. I would like to echo what Mr. Clyde, Mr. Jim, and Mr. Beasley have spoken. Our biggest concern is egress, ingress, as well as occupant load and vehicular load on Berry Avenue. And so I would like some more explanation and some clarification, and ultimately just don't want that to be any additional loading on the street. So I would like for you guys to see that in consideration when you make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Emily?
Good evening. My name is Emily Falk-Libby. I am 428 Berry Avenue. Our house basically overlooks right there the, the back of the fence of the pool. And I just want to echo what my neighbors have said. We are very opposed to anything that might create an opening, access to Berry Avenue, particularly on the safety level, we have a two-year-old, anything that might create an open access to the pool, even mistakenly if the doors left open, and even more traffic, and all the other reasons that my neighbors have mentioned. So thank you very much.
Anyone else on Zoom wish to speak to this case? Okay, I, I don't, unless, Brian, unless you pick someone else. Is someone trying to speak?
Are you trying to speak, Mr. Williams? Yeah?
I've got in trouble with mute. My name's Charles Williams, I'm at 320 Starett Avenue. And there, I'm not sure if there's some misunderstanding about this ingress, egress, but I, when I, when I was talking to Ronald Van Erv about doing this resurvey, what we were trying to do was, he wanted to get the, some, there's a wall between his, where his pool is and my back lot, backyard. He wanted to get, it's about, I think, two or three feet over the wall, that was my property. And I said, fine, I never use it, it's back there on the other side of the fence, it's, it's where your deck is for your swimming pool. And, but there's a, a section that is about, I'm thinking 12, 13, 14 feet, where his fence ends at the north part of it. And it's, it's where I've had access to Berry, but access for, I have a gate back there, I access when I'm putting like trash or leaves or stuff for the city to pick up. And, and I asked Ron if, if it was clear that I would still have that access just to get through that gate, so I can put, you know, stuff back there. I don't, I don't think Ron is looking for access ingress and egress, and I'm not sure, I don't think the map says that to his pool. That's, I, I think there may be a little bit of misunderstanding about this ingress, egress. So that's, that's about all I know that I can add to it.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll close the public portion of this hearing. We'll bring Mr. Van Erv back up to answer some questions.
Sounds like there's a lot of questions to answer.
Yeah, and maybe just to provide some structure to this, let's start by what, what is meant, if you know, by the, the statement of providing access, ingress and egress, rather, to...
Oh, sorry, yes. There we go.
So if you could address the ingress, egress issue that's being raised by the, by the residents on Berry?
What it is, is actually, behind my fence, and it's actually my property, there is a little cement rise that gives Charles access to go into his backyard. And it's been there for 30, 40, 50 years.
Access with a car or access, access with a car? I mean, how big of an access is it, what are you talking about?
It's probably seven feet across, and it has around about 33-degree angle to it, no going up. Literally, if you tried to put a car in there, you'd bottom out your car, you know, for it. And all it is, is a gateway for him to be able to get into his backyard. That's it. There's no alley there, there's no other house to get to, there's no connection to anything else, you know, for it. And strictly for him to be able to get, you know, through, actually my property, to have access to Berry, just to put, you know, trash down there, or to get into his backyard. That's it. Now, as buttoning up to that, the fence that is in existence around my pool is built there, it's literally about nine feet high, there's no access going out that fence at all. The only access to the pool area through the fence is on my property, off of my driveway. And between my neighbor right behind me, there is a chain-link fence that does have a gate to it, and I keep that chained up and locked, so that way no one can go in and out. So that is all the issues, and I've got pictures I can show you. And also, you should have an overhead picture of the whole area, I believe. You know, this shows my pool area, the fencing all around it, and also the wall between me and Charles that we're swapping the property. As for increasing traffic, there is no increase in traffic. It's, actually, the increased traffic on that road is because of all the families that actually have moved in. You know, there are kids now that, when I moved into my house eight years ago, there are almost no kids behind us on Berry. Since then, almost all those houses have actually sold over and have kids in them now. And they play there, they have a good time, they do movie night, stuff like that, and they have fun, you know, for it. So the traffic is actually there, you know, because of them. You know, so as for other traffic that might come in there, most of the time from my seat is from people getting lost because of Google, and they come down, they turn around, and they head back out. As for me and Charles, I have no access to drive through there, there's fencing all in between, the same thing with Mr. Williams. So that is, you know, the egress issue. And same thing, like I said, for kids coming in, there's no access at all for the kids. The fencing is going all around, eight to almost 10-foot high.
So I guess, in other words, nothing is changing with respect to access, ingress, egress to either property?
Nothing that's been there for, like I said, 30, 40 years. And it's been, it's been the same way this whole time.
Can I ask the audience if that addresses their concerns, what he's had to say? Does that address your concerns?
No, it does not. Why are we changing the zone? They have to. 320, I'm trying to think of my, I'm sorry. 320 is Mr. Williams, correct?
Correct.
He is zoned NPD, Neighborhood Preservation District. Mr. Van Erk is zoned PR1, which is Planned Residential District 1. When they swap land, those little strips, one being added to his property, is a different zoning than his property, so that little strip has to be rezoned to tie into his, and the piece that Mr. Williams is getting has to be changed to NPD, because you can't have two different zonings on your property. The lots themselves, the overall lots aren't being rezoned, it's just the land swap, the little strips of land that they're swapping has to match zoning.
Can I ask a question? Why is permitted use of PR1 designed to attach dwelling units and excessive structures as well as recreation and services of use, clearly incidentally to residential occupancy? What does that mean as opposed to the other one that just attached dwelling units and excessive structure?
In a PR, in a Planned Residential District, when that subdivision was laid out, they could have included a clubhouse, but it wasn't added as a part of it, it's not a part of it. They could have, based on the zoning, but they, the developer didn't choose to do that, as far as I know.
No, there's no, I have a shed. Would that work out? That's it. I mean, the only reason that we're here is simply because these are two different zones. If it wasn't for that fact, I wouldn't even be here. It's that simple. We're just swapping one little strip of property on one side for one little strip on the other side, just to have a wall, you know, taken care of, that's it.
And again, just, just for clarification, saying again, for properties that are all on Berry Avenue, nothing about the resurvey or the rezoning in any way transfers whatever existing access Mr. Williams may have to the cul-de-sac to, to the other property? If you're understanding that correctly?
There is no transfer. He's just having the same, the same it's been for the past 20, 30 years. He's just having access to be able to open his gate, put stuff down, and close the gate up. More trash is put down there by other people who've come down the street and dumped. When I first moved in eight years ago, that was a dump zone.
Yes.
We pushed off there.
Right.
I have been the policeman for that whole section, it's garbage all.
Right, and then with everybody moving in and all the changes, all of that was stopped. Yeah, and that, that is all we're doing.
So may I ask, so your point is, you are not going to drive through your fence?
I can't.
I know.
I can't.
I, I mean, I thought you could put a rug in.
No, no.
Okay, so you're not going to, you're not going to walk out your gate and dump a bunch of garbage out there?
No.
Are you going to make a gate?
There is, no.
I know, but are you going to make a gate from your pool?
No.
You're not?
No.
So we don't have to worry about the kids going through the gate?
Never have. I put the, I put the fence to keep them from coming through. I want privacy, I want safety for the kids.
I hear you. You know, we're, we're not understanding, we thought we were fixing to have people from Starett being able to ride through and join us in Berry Avenue.
That's the whole reason why all that property got sold 20-plus years ago. The city did not want to pull the Berry through, and so what they did was, they offered all the property owners of those four properties, buy, divide it how you want, how you want, divide it up, we're going, we're not going to pull the street through. And that's how Berry became a cul-de-sac.
Actually, at one time, the right-of-way went straight through to Starett. Yeah, so you know, the city vacated it.
The right-of-way goes over my driveway. No, it's that, it's that simple. But when those properties were sold, Ed Dos, who used to own my property, he got the majority part, everyone else split those little pieces up, and they, and the city closed it off.
Mr. Van Erv?
There is no access.
I just wanted to mention, this was, when I walked the property today and spoke to you, I'll tell everyone here what I said to you, what's in it for you? So if I'm thinking like a resident, I'm looking at this application, and I'm thinking, well, why would he want to do this? What's he, what's going to be his benefit to having this happen? And it sounds like that's exactly everybody's thinking, something's going to happen here, what's the, what's the secret? What's, what do we not know?
End game is simply moving the wall, Chuck and I have, there's two walls there. All we're doing is splitting one wall to him, one wall to me, so that way, it's very simple, privacy on the pool area, that's it.
So it's just a zoning issue?
It's a, that's a...
It's not?
It's not even zoning on the back, that's not even the issue, it's the tiny strip in the front that's being changed.
It's nothing else, strictly because it's two different zone properties. And we found that out by mistake. Actually, no, Fred and Vicky found that out when, because all this was supposed to have been taken care of a couple of months ago, and they were like, uh, guess what? We have a little problem. We're two different zones because of two different aged properties, and that's it.
Can I ask the question again? Does that, does that, do you all feel better now about what you're hearing? Does that change anything?
Because we were promised that that property would never impact Berry Avenue, so if he gets his gate...
I don't have the gate.
No, no, ma'am, there's, the only gate is the gate that's there today.
All right. What about when he sells it and the next person moves in and decides, I'm going to use that gate?
There is no...
I'm going to park my car on Berry Avenue and go in my gate and use my pool. My friends will park on Berry Avenue and go in my gate and use my pool. Y'all can't see how small that circle is.
There's, the gate doesn't open to the pool.
There is no gate there.
It's not, we needed egress.
For, so Mr. Williams, who will no longer own that gate, can walk, technically, it's so he can legally walk across the grass and put his grass clip, or whatever he puts out there, like he's been doing for the past 30 years.
Well, truly, in Homewood, you're supposed to put your trash in front of your house, not in front of our houses. I know, but you said...
And I do.
When y'all leave, that the next person comes, it can be our issue.
Well, they can't legally do that.
Yeah.
That's what we call the law.
That's, that's a, that's a legal issue, that's, that's not really what's in front of us right now. I appreciate your concern, but that's really more of an enforcement issue than it is a zoning issue.
So again, just, just for clarification, so I guess if you notice this, the outpour more specific, instead of various efficient, we may just leave everyone's, up in the air exactly what's contemplated, road frontage on Starett that currently is your property will go to Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I'm giving between our two driveways is a little strip of my grass, it's like about like 40 watt. He's, I'm giving him a foot of that from the road up to, to my shed, and then he's giving me the equivalent on the backside, just so he can have the wall onto my property, then my, for my part, then his wall on his property, and do just a line up in between that, that's it.
And in a little incline, it goes off the corner of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Whose property will that go to?
That's my property, that's my property.
And currently usual property?
Yeah, it's been my, it's been my property. Yeah. All, all this is just formally saying, you know, same thing like anybody else, just like everybody else who is on an alley or whatever, they can open their gate and have access to it. Yeah, same thing. It's been like that for over 30 years. That concrete's been there probably since the 40s.
No, it hasn't.
Well, whenever, whenever that road was done, it's been there. I've, I've been in, I've been...
That swimming pool was not there, are you telling me?
I've been in the house...
Okay, yeah, we, we, and I appreciate, I appreciate, we're trying to get more input because an explanation was provided about what ingress and egress meant. The public portion of this hearing is closed, and we, we thank you again for your additional input, but I think at this point, if we could just limit it to questions by board members, and then we can take a motion, vote on the case. So is there any more questions from people on the commission?
I do have one more question, if you don't mind me asking. Vicky or Fred, would it be, would, would it be an option to have the 316, or what's the closer address to Oxford Circle? Is that 316 or 320? If you're looking at the two houses, the house on the left, PR1, if PR1 would put in a petition to rezone to NPD, is that an option? To rezon...
To rezon the entire lot?
Yes, to NPD?
Well, you couldn't do it tonight, we only advertised a four-foot strip, and to rezon the entire lot, we'd have to back up to one and come forward again, because it's a lot more area than what you... a lot more area than what you previously.
Would that allay the concerns of the neighborhood? I'm just asking.
I think their concern is access. And NPD doesn't have anything in it that says they can't go out their back either. You know what I'm saying? It, it isn't unlike, like Fred was saying, an alley. It goes behind you. It's a right-of-way, a city alley. And this is a city street. So I don't think it would make, give them a different comfort level to, for the whole lot because there's nothing in NPD that would, that says you can't use both. So I don't think that's gonna help anything. My only thought was earlier, you know, was that, you know, the gate be restricted to the width it is now. And, you know, then you couldn't obviously drive a car through it.
Can you make that part of the, we could make that part of the recommendation?
Okay, and it's better if he proffered it.
Okay. I understand that.
And I think that strip that's down there, that piece of concrete right now, is part of the city right-of-way anyway.
It probably is.
It's only about five foot high, about like five by seven.
And did you hear what she said about the gate and proffering and making that part of?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, the gate's not my gate.
It's your neighbor's gate?
Yeah.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah. But that means that, that little chunk of property is my property. His gate's right there. And from what I, I've never seen him open it, number one. Number two, I think it's only about three feet wide.
And that's what she's saying, is could he proffer to keep that width so you couldn't drive a car through it?
I mean, I, I personally don't care. You know, but the thing is, if, if he, if he has to get to his backyard, he's got a big tree. And if it's gotta be taken down or any work's gotta be done, you know, then a truck will need to have access, you know, in that area. Or let the fire department have to have access to go into the backyard. How is that gonna happen?
I don't know how the other, the 320 resident could proffer for Mr. Van Erb, who's the applicant, technically.
Right. He, he's the one that's on Zoom, right? He's the.
Right, at 320.
That's what I was gonna do. I thought, and I was confused that who had the gate. That was my, that was my fault.
Tell me again what it is that you're asking?
If you would consider proffering to keep the gate at three feet width so you couldn't drive a car through it?
Um, the, the gate is, is three feet now. I don't have any intention to, to make it any wider. I, I will make it, or, or just say that, and I think I had talked to Ron about this. In the past, I had a wider gate. And I did have a tree company come in. I mean, this was probably 20 years ago. A tree company had a truck that came in to take out a tree in my backyard. But that gate right now, it's, it's a wooden, you know, then I took down the chain link fence on the full length of the back and across that little stretch, which I think is about 14 feet, 13, 14 feet wide. But the, the gate is only three feet wide. And when I built the wooden fence, that's all I wanted was something that I could open up, take branches out, grass clippings, leaves, stuff like that. So that's, that's all I would want is three-foot gate to get out and put trash out there.
You know, I'm not really.
It's actually very simple.
Yeah. You don't have a gate. Would you proffer that you would not put a gate on the back of your property from, to, to?
No. It's, I, actually, I can't even physically put the gate back there because the back, the cement butt's up to my back wall. And I can't even physically get out of it if I was to try to put a gate.
So you would be willing to proffer that you wouldn't put a gate there, I guess?
Yeah, it would be there.
Okay. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Again, we're gonna do this like we did earlier. We're gonna do the re-survey first. I would entertain a motion to approve RS 21-04-03 to change the property lines.
Motion to pass RS 21-04-03.
Second. Okay, Mr. Wilson with the motion, Mr. Armstead with the second. If you could call the roll, please.
All right. Ms. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Willcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So your re-survey passes.
Thank you.
The next, I would also entertain a motion to approve RZ 21-04-04. That would change the zoning with, again, the proffer that Mr. Van Erb would not build a gate off the back of his property to, to the, to bury, to the circle and then to bury.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Wilson with the motion, Mr. Harwell with the second.
All right. Ms. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Willcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes. And that will be recommended on a nine, a nine to zero vote to the city council.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. For, for the benefit of the citizens in the audience, as Mr. Roberts indicated, this will be going to the city council, the zoning part, not the subdivision. But the rezoning will go and there will be another public hearing before the city council. And you will receive notification of that public hearing. So again, if you wanted to make any comments to the city council, that would be your opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes our new business. As I mentioned, as we're coming out, I was going to raise one additional issue of old business. It has nothing to do with what we've talked about tonight, specifically the, the case presented by the city back in February of 2020 to approve Article 8, which would be a new article for the zoning ordinance for a downtown, new, new downtown zoning plan. Back in February of 2020, Ms. Henderson, Susan Henderson from Placemakers, presented the case on behalf of the city. We then opened it up to public comment. That was held, I think we had about a two-hour hearing, all of which is available on YouTube. And then we, as a, as a commission, voted to table the case for further consideration and further discussion. We're now 14 months later, and I don't believe any additional discussion has been had, or it has, I wasn't aware of it. But I thought that, given our obligations as a commission to follow the requirements under Alabama, under the Alabama code, specifically the provisions that create the planning commission and give us our, our obligations and duties, tells us what we can and can't do and what we must do. Issues related to rezoning, the statute's very clear that we shall provide a report to the city council. If we listen to the case, we provide a report. We tabled the case. We have not provided our report. I believe we have an obligation to do so. So in a, in a moment, I'm gonna ask for a motion to untable or remove from the table the downtown rezoning plan first heard in February of 2020. My thought would be that if it is removed from the table, we would have, over the next month, the members, the newer members of the commission, I think we have more newer members than old members at this point, would have an opportunity to listen to the presentation by Ms. Henderson, listen to the public comments. And then, based on that information, plus the actual application, decide whether they are comfortable voting on that case. We call, we'd add it to the agenda next month and then have a roll call vote to approve or disapprove, recommend or not recommend to the city council, the new zoning plan as it has been modified over the last couple of years. So, and again, the, the public portion of that case has already been heard. So it would simply be a voice vote, a roll call vote by the, the commission members. So with that said, I would entertain a motion for the, the case, the downtown zoning case. It doesn't have a specific number, but the one that was heard back in February of 2020, to be removed from the table and brought back up for consideration by the commission.
Mr. Roberts, I'd like to make a comment for public record prior to the motion.
Certainly.
And that record, or that, that comment is the, I'll speak on behalf of a couple of the prior planning commission members who are no longer members, and obviously not for you or for Mr. Cronteras. But the disgust and intent of the table at the time was for adequate time for the city to have conducted, paid for, obviously, and had a traffic and parking study done after the operation commenced of the new hotel development. The study has been completed and the hotel is only now operational. So in defense of the idea that we were waiting for something to be done up until the recent reelection, I'm sorry, or turnover on the commission, that was part of the motivation in that delay. So I appreciate you hearing that.
And thank you, Mr. Wilson. I think we also might have had a, a small pandemic in the meantime that might have slowed things down as well. Does anyone else want to speak to this before?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion?
I guess for someone who is new, who doesn't have the history of being able to go through it, I may suggest that we have public hearing or have a comment session during the next meeting and then have the vote the following meeting. That way we have two months to, to get our hands around the actual information, what people said, what's, what's being offered.
Just to understand, you're suggesting that the city present its case again?
Well, at least for the benefit of, at least for me, that hadn't had the opportunity to see it, to understand it. But to me, having two months to do so as opposed to one month would give me more, more time to understand the issues and also to hear from citizens that may have opinions about it one way or the other.
I appreciate that and thank you. And that certainly, I certainly understand the need for, especially the new members of the commission who weren't, you know, didn't hear this two or three times as it's come through a few times, to understand it. I guess my response would be, we, we do have a two-hour public hearing with a fairly substantial presentation by Placemakers and then comments from, I'm guessing, 30 or so members of the, of the public at that hearing. And we, we'd actually concluded that part of the hearing. And the case is actually ripe for a vote. The only reason the vote didn't happen is the case was tabled. At least my suggestion would be, take the time and we can provide the materials, the, the application itself, the, the plan itself, what it would do to the zoning. And then obviously, the video of the meeting would hopefully provide the information sufficient for people to make a determination. And our determination, our recommendation might be nine to zero against. But i- if, if that didn't provide enough information, my thought would be that if someone didn't feel comfortable voting, that perhaps they could abstain. But just reopening the, the case, I don't think is something that's on, on the table right now.
Mr. Chairman, I can ask a question.
Yeah.
The public hearing that you are referring to for them to watch, is that from November of 2019?
There were, there were multiple hearings. And I don't know, I know the last one was the first, the first week of February of 2020.
Okay. The, the reason I ask is because the changes that were made from the council in December. And I wanted to make sure that that was considered by everyone that's new, that, that we have crystallized in place 18th Street from 28th to Oxmore and 29th from 18th to 19th. So I just want to make sure, if you go back and watch the November planning commission public hearing, that change was made after that.
But Jennifer, we don't have that. We didn't start recording planning commissions back then. And we did record the February one.
Okay.
Because we knew it was a special one.
Okay.
But we do not have a recording of that November planning commission.
No, that's a good, that's, I wanted to make sure the one you were referring to was the, I didn't, I did not remember that you had a public hearing in February. So I just wanted to make sure.
So, yeah, we had, yeah, we had a, a two-hour public hearing. And Ms. Henderson at that time was able to explain and give some context, all the changes that were made, some of, some of which based on discussions with, with, you know, people impacted, the stakeholders in downtown, the changes to, to limit, you know, mixed use to certain areas and not, and not, not impact 18th Street, 29th Street. All that was laid out by Ms. Henderson in the, in the February 2020 meeting.
I just wanted to confirm that. I did not remember that there was a two-hour, I attended the one in November and I did not remember there being one in February. Obviously, it wasn't on the first of time, but I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. By untabling this, what are we trying to accomplish?
Mr. Cronteras, the, untabling this, the purpose of that would be to allow the planning commission to fulfill its statutory obligation, which is to make a recommendation or report to the city council on this case. And I, I didn't say this earlier, but part of my concern is, is presidential. I don't think we as a body, especially on cases in which we're a recommending body, not, not a final decision-making body, that it's a bad precedent for us to, and I'm not saying this is exactly what happened here, but, but to, to table things, we don't want to get to the city council for whatever reason. We, we have an obligation. The statute says we shall make a report and recommendation to the city council. And, and that is, and frankly, I think tabling it for further discussion might have been okay. I just, I think we've gotten to the point now where we have an obligation, a statutory obligation, a legal obligation to do something on this case, whether it's positive or negative.
Well, you know, the tabling issues have been resolved in order for us to be untabling
Well, and we can go back and watch the tape. There are discussions, there were a lot of different reasons, from my understanding. One of, one of them was concerned about traffic. But ultimately, my.
Where was traffic? Was the height? The height was another one besides the traffic?
Okay, but, but the, the actual plan itself had been modified. And, and what we were gonna vote on was the plan as modified after going to the city council, after meetings with the public, after making some significant, I believe concessions and changes to the original plan to accommodate and assuage concerns from the, from the business owners and from the property owners. We were then presented with a plan that we were to, to recommend or not recommend. So again, the things you're describing, concerns about height, concerns about traffic, those might be perfectly valid reasons for you to vote against it. Or recommend, you have your vote recommending the, the plan not be approved. I don't think there are appropriate reasons for us not to fulfill our statutory obligation to actually make a recommendation.
Mr. Roberts, I think that might be that Mr. Cronteras is speaking specifically to the hotel. And that's not a question right now either. We're talking about the tabled item, which is the, the rezone, the, the broad rezoning of downtown, not anything specific to the hotel, correct? I mean, that's what we're, we're, it is inclusive of the rezoning.
The hotel's located in the zoning.
Right.
In the area impacted by the zoning.
Right.
But the zoning plan has no impact on the hotel.
This doesn't have anything to do with the operation of the hotel.
That cake is pretty much cooked at this point.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, to untable this and present it back to the city council, there has to be some legitimate legal reason to untable it. And as far as I understand from the way you presented this, you know, you're just asking to untable it, you know, with no reason, no, you know, nothing. And, you know, you know, in my opinion, you know, I think there needs to be more discussion about what's the reasons to untable it. And then decide whether it has to be changed and go back to the city council. Because when it's gonna go back to the city council, it's gonna approve what we disapprove.
Thank you.
That, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Cronteras. I think, I think the, the point, I guess the underlying point or overarching point is that tabling this indefinitely, I believe, is a violation of our obligations. We're acting outside of our statutory authority to table it with, with no endgame, with no end in sight. We're 14 months later. Again, we've, we've had a lot of things happen. We've had a global pandemic. We've had Zoom hearings. We've continued to do our business, though. And ultimately, you've cited reasons you don't believe it should be untabled. And that's certainly your right to vote that way. If, if there is a motion. if there is a motion made.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't say that it's not supposed to be untabled. I'm saying that what is the reasons to be untabled? If the reasons to untable it are valid and legitimate, you know, there is no problem. I don't have no problem. But just to say we will untable it, you know, I, I don't think that's right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cronteras. I, I, you know, I, I don't want to-
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Repeat too much. Uh, uh, you know, I think I've stated, at least for, in my view, in making this request, uh, the reasons why I, I believe this is something that should be considered and taken off the table. Um, and certainly reasonable minds can disagree on that point.
Okay.
And with that said, I would entertain a motion, uh, to remove from the table, uh, the downtown rezoning, uh, case last heard in February of 2020.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion for Ms. Andres, uh, and a second from Mr. Respinto.
Call the roll. Okay. Ms. Andres.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Armstead.
Yes.
Mr. Respinto.
Yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Willcutt.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
No.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Uh, yes. So, um, that case is untabled, uh, by a vote of seven to two.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, uh, will be on the agenda next month, um, for, for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a, I have one more question. Uh, you know, it may not be, I don't know what's the right word, may not be appropriate. But how can the new members of the planning commission understand what was the reason of the table and, and vote in favor of untabling?
And thank you again, Mr. Cronteras. I, we have a two hour video that I will make available that's on the city website, uh, that, that captures the entire meeting from, uh, from February of 2020, including Ms. Henderson's presentation, um, the public comment, and then the discussion by the commission members that ultimately led to the vote that we, uh, to, to table the case. So I think that should provide sufficient information, uh, for the members, the new members of the commission to understand, uh, at least understand the reasons why that vote went the way it did, or the reasons why the proponents of tabling it, uh, voted the way they did. So I think, I think that information's valuable.
Should we wait for them to review that before they can vote tonight?
Well, that, that is again-
Point of order has been passed.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, we, we have passed it. Uh, it's going to be on the agenda next month. Uh, they'll have a month to review the same information that we were privy to, um, 14 months ago. And it'll be, again, on the agenda, uh, for us to, to vote on next month. And, um, I have nothing further unless someone else has something. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry, I was talking to-
Okay. So Mr.-
Who made the motion?
Mr. Harwell made the motion. Ms. Willcutt, I believe, made this second.
Okay. All right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Adjourned.